All right, everyone. Thank you so much to the being here for the July 21 Spokane City Council Legislative Meeting. Ms. Sester, would you call the roll?
Did you want to do the land acknowledgement first?
We'll actually start with the land acknowledgement. Thank you. Getting off to a great start. All right. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. And we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization. May we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokane and their relatives as we work together making decisions that benefit all. May we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It's time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now, may I call the roll, Ms. Sester?
Council President Protem Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Council President Wilkerson and Councilmember Klitsky are absent.
Okay, thank you. We do not have poetry at the podium tonight, or proclamations and salutations, or reports from community organizations. However, I would like to take a moment of silence for Sean Nolan and Sarah Doxy. Both were tragically killed this week in traffic fatalities. Many had a connection with Sean being the son of a longtime city employee and Sarah working in healthcare in Spokane and being an advocate. So, please, if you will, just join me in a moment of silence. Okay, Ms. Sester, if you'll go on to the consent agenda.
Did you just want to take testimony on it, or you wanted me to read it?
Sorry. Do we have anyone signed up for the consent agenda? Oh, thank you. Okay. We have David Beach. Is David Beach here? David, if you are, you want to unmute yourself and hit star three? All right. No, David. Any council commentary on the consent agenda?
I just think there's some good investments being made into police today when it comes to police equipment. You know, we've got some ballistic helmets, some night vision goggles, some other things like that, some vehicles for SWAT. And we've seen recently in a couple of situations where our officers were ill-equipped in some of those scenarios, and hopefully this gets them a little bit closer to having the equipment to do what they need to do.
Great, thank you. Any other council commentary? Yeah, I appreciate a lot of what's in here, particularly the funding for therapeutic courts, as well as the DUI officers. That's a great partnership with the Washington State Traffic Safety Commission and working with those grant opportunities to make sure that they continue to do a lot of the work that is needed. All right. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Consent agenda approved. On to the legislative agenda.
Resolution 2025-47 updating the appointments of for and against committee members relating to Proposition Number One on the November 4, 2025 general election ballot regarding a proposed increase in the regular property tax levy for citywide park improvements and safety for a 20-year period beginning in 2026.
Okay, we have one person signed up to testify, David Beach. Is David out there? Is David online?
David, you should be able to unmute yourself now by hitting star six.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yes. I vote no for any tax increases. You guys waste the money. Please stop raising taxes. It affects everyone. That is all.
All right. Thank you for the commentary, Mr. Beach. Any council commentary? Go ahead.
Yeah, of course, we'll be voting for this, but it is a little frustrating because sort of the concept behind it is that we've got, you know, two opposing sides giving the most robust argument for and against the measure that's on the ballot, even if there is no campaign one direction or the other. And unfortunately, we weren't able to get a full complement of committee members on either side, but certainly on the no side, there's only one. And it's always just a little frustrating that we are not able to kind of inspire more in the public to want to participate in this process, and hopefully we can do better in the future to provide more folks with access to participate in this. And so I'll leave it there, but it's an important piece so that folks have all the information, all the different perspectives. I just wish we could serve a full complement for writing those statements.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and along those lines, it is disappointing that we weren't able to get three for each. We got two for the pro side and one for the con side. I will say the one for the con side, Mr. Dennis Flynn, is a regular here, and he will do a good job representing the con side for sure without needing extra hands. And then on the pro side, you know, we have former state Senator Andy Billig and a former mayor, David Condon, who, if you have followed politics or not, on the same side of the aisle. And so I think that the voters will get a pretty good understanding of what the measure, what it will do and what it won't do on both sides. And so I'm excited that those three put their names forward, and I appreciate them for doing so.
All right. Thank you so much. Any additional council commentary? All right, prepare to vote. All right, thank you. It is, resolution passes unanimously.
Resolution 2025-51 is deferred to July 28, 2025 agenda. Ordinance C 36643 is deferred to July 28, 2025 agenda. Ordinance C 36644 amending ordinance C 14947 that vacated a portion of Nettleton Street in the city of Spokane.
Just David Beach.
All right. David Beach, please unmute yourself.
David, you should be able to unmute yourself by hitting star six. Okay, try one more time to hit star six. That should do it. Not star three, star six. There we go.
Hello?
Can hear you.
Yeah. Why is it you keep deferring things? If it's so important, then don't defer them. I don't understand why you keep deferring things until you have your proper amount of people that will back you in the gallery. It seems conflicted.
Okay, thank you. All right, any council commentary?
Could you clarify, is this 44 and 45, or 45?
Correct, yeah. This is, today we heard the request to defer on Grace. This is for...
44.
44, correct.
Thank you.
All right. Prepare to vote. Thank you. Passes unanimously.
Ordinance C 36645 amending ordinance C 22933 that vacated that portion of Grace Avenue except the north 10 feet of the south half thereof, from the extended west line of vacated Nettleton Street to the arc of a circle having a radius of 37 and 1/2 feet, the center point of which is the center point of the existing cul-de-sac and located on the center line of Grace Avenue.
We have one person signed up to comment, David Beach.
Don't you have more important things to fix, like potholes? I don't understand why potholes aren't a priority. You spend all this money on other projects, but you can't fix the potholes. Why?
All right, thank you. Any council commentary? All right, seeing none, prepare to vote. All right, ordinance passes unanimously.
Ordinance C 36716 is deferred to July 28, 2025 agenda. Ordinance C 36718 is deferred to August 25, 2025 agenda. Ordinance C 367202 is deferred to July 28, 2025 agenda. Ordinance C 36719 to adopt an overlay zone for property located at 2747 West Thorpe in the city and county of Spokane, state of Washington, by amending the official zoning map to show a planned unit development overlay zone for said property.
Okay, we have one person signed up to testify, David Beach.
David, go ahead and hit star six one more time, and you should be unmuted. Okay.
Thank you, David. Any council commentary? All right, seeing none, prepare to vote. All right, ordinance passes unanimously. And we'll go on to first reading.
Ordinance C 36726 repealing duplicate code sections in the Spokane municipal code, Chapter 12.02, repealing Sections 12.02.1004 and 12.02.1008 of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C 36721 relating to alcohol advertising regulations established by the Washington State Liquor Control Board and adopting a new chapter, 10.63, to the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C 36723 is deferred for first reading to August 18 and final reading for August 25, 2025. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
We have David Beach signed up to testify. Take it away, David.
Yes, why do you keep deferring things? It seems like if it's important to you and you get your right audience to promote your agenda, you don't defer things. But if you don't have the right audience in the gallery, and you don't have the "I support the current thing" people in the gallery, you always defer things. Or if someone is educated and you have a plethora of people in the gallery that are against something, you tend to defer it to where there's no people that will oppose you. Why is this?
Okay. Thank you so much, David. All right, we'll now move on to open forum, and we do have a number of folks signed up to testify tonight. So first up, we will have Michael Schneider, and then Juliet Berenti and Dennis Flynn. Michael, you are up first. Schneider, Michael Schneider.
Michael, if you're online, you can hit star three to raise your hand.
We don't see Michael. So next up, we're going to have Juliet Berenti, Dennis Flynn, and then Cody Zaluzki. Juliet Berenti?
For nearly a month, blood libels and hate directed at the Jewish community was left in front of City Hall without a single condemnation from any of you on City Council or the mayor. City staff and citizens of Spokane were forced to walk past statements like "Israel kills babies," reminiscent of ancient blood libels that Jews kill babies to use in their matzah, or "Death to Zionism," the belief that Jews have a right to self-determination in our ancestral homeland, a belief central to 90% of Jews, and "Palestine will be free from the river to the sea," a call to ethnically cleanse Jews from our homeland, and you did nothing. Hate speech is free speech and is protected by the First Amendment, so if someone writes "Death to Pride" or "Death to the NAACP" in chalk in front of City Hall, that would not be a crime, but it would absolutely be hateful, and every one of you would understand that those statements, in public, in front of City Hall, would make both the gay community and the black community less safe. Just as you spoke up publicly and condemned the skid marks on the Pride crosswalk and the white supremacist stickers at an intersection, you would not hesitate to use your voices to publicly condemn that graffiti. For the Pride crosswalk, you held a press conference. For the white supremacist stickers, you took immediate action. We have been contacting you repeatedly for a month about graffiti that included "Death to Zionism," and you have refused to meet with us, refused to take our concerns seriously, and refused to wash it off for nearly a month. When you treat hate against Jews differently, your silence becomes approval, leaving the Jewish community less safe. Two people in DC were murdered by a man who yelled "Free Palestine." People were firebombed in Boulder by a man who yelled "Free Palestine." Jews in this country are being murdered by people who yell the same phrases that were written right in front of our City Hall that you refuse to condemn. Speak up and condemn this hate speech directed at the Jewish community. If you refuse, and God forbid someone escalates to violence because they interpreted your silence as consent, don't you dare mourn the dead Jews when you refuse to protect the living Jews.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we will have Dennis Flynn, Cody Zaluzki, and then Maura Kegley. Dennis Flynn?
Dennis, if you're online, you can hit star six to unmute. I don't see Dennis.
Okay. Dennis did email us some commentary today, so we'll make sure that that is reflected into the record. Next up, Cody Zaluzki, Maura Kegley, and then Eugene Knowles. Cody?
Hello, Cody Kegley. Cody Zaluzki, speaking as co-director of the Psychedelic Medicine Alliance, Washington, and on behalf of Enlightened Spokane. We in Spokane will join other major cities in Washington State in decriminalizing natural psychedelic medicines such as psilocybin mushrooms, along with other indigenous medicines. Increasingly, public officials are in agreement that there are no valid reasons to prosecute individuals for non-commercial use of these medicines for personal healing and growth. Scientific literature is in agreement with thousands of papers detailing the low-risk profile and numerous mental health benefits for which there are otherwise no current pharmacological treatments. The best theory to the legal risk for individuals using these medicines comes at the lower level, and I urge the city to take it in the minor step of adopting a decriminalization regulation and give peace in mind to those otherwise committing any type of crime. Thank you, and I see my time.
Thank you, Cody. Next up, we'll hear from Maura Kegley, Eugene Knowles, and then Paula Horning.
Hello, I'm Maura Kegley. Arrest of protesters are happening across the nation, including recent federal charges brought against protesters right here in Spokane by the current White House administration to instill fear, provoke intimidation, and to basically encourage an end to protests. A quote from Senator Patty Murray, "Limited federal resources are being diverted away from pursuing violent criminals to round up individuals with no criminal history, including protesters. What is the city planning to do to protect its citizens and ensure they have the continued freedom to speak out against the woeful conduct, the complete disregard of human rights, and the lack of respect for our Constitution? We have high-ranking leaders in place that are breaking laws, ignoring the Constitution, not giving due process, performing illegal search and seizures, destroying people's property all under the guise of federal authority. What is being implemented by the city of Spokane to protect the First Amendment rights and the freedom of speech of our citizens?" Thank you.
Thank you, Maura. Really quickly, before we hear from Eugene Knowles, we're going to come back, Michael Schneider, if you want to come on up.
I apologize, I thought this was happening a little later. Michael Schneider, 1808, East 33rd. The mission of the people banging the drum for the new charter amendment they call Prop 1-75% Act is very simple: get the icky people out of sight. They cloak their sales campaign in a lot of high-sounding and public-spirited language, touting phony numbers, false assertions about causes of homelessness, and presenting themselves as protectors of democracy. Let's start with the numbers. Gavin Cooley claims that Spokane now ranks as first or second, he's not sure which, in the nation for per capita overdose deaths. That's simply false. We should all take such glib use of numbers as an insult. This Spokane Business Association hired a well-known expert, Mr. Marbut, to conduct a survey, one totally debunked by range media, and announced that more than 50% of Spokane's homeless weren't from here, and therefore we shouldn't spend our resources making life so easy for them. We should give them bus tickets and cut them off from local help. The SBA knew what they were buying. Marbut had delivered the same expert testimony for other cities as well. They want to reinstate the 1,000-foot camping ban, ostensibly because homeless people pose a danger to the children of the housed. Totally false. If they had any evidence of that, even anecdotal evidence, we'd be hearing all about it. They're oblivious to the inherent absurdity in the original ban. It kept homeless people away from schools only when those people were camping or sleeping, mostly at night, when the children weren't there. And the number 1,000? No rational basis there either. It was chosen to stimulate the lizard brain.
Thank you, Michael. Your time is up.
My time is up?
Yep. We have two minutes for open forum. Happy to connect further, and you can email us the rest of your commentary.
When I email you, I don't get responses, so, you know, I got a paragraph and a half to go.
Michael, I'm sorry, but your time is up, so please email it. We'll make sure that gets distributed, all of council and staff. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we'll hear from Eugene Knowles, Paula Horning, and then Robert Teal. Eugene, come on down.
Been here in Spokane since 2010, Council. I'm glad I got somebody in front of me to talk a little bit about homelessness. I thought Spokane had forgotten about it, but the reason I keep talking about it is I'd love to talk about all the other things going on around, but this is right at home, and it keeps going on. Well, okay, I talked to someone last week about Matty's Place, and I didn't know what it was. I went out there. Top-notch place. They serve a 60%, they say, homeless, but I don't want to go into too much detail. I went to UGM today. I usually go around the Fourth of July every year to talk to them, and, you know, too much to talk about there. Now, St. Margaret's, and the other one is Truth Ministries. The reason I got these is these are the type of places that get things done. Now, I'll end on this: tracked shelter is a type of place that doesn't get things done. Now, you got these scattered shelters, they're far below the level of Matty's Place.
All right, thank you, Eugene. Next up, we'll hear from Paula Horning, Robert Teal, and then David Beach.
I'm Paula Horning. I live on 30th Avenue between Division and Bernard, and I've lived there for 26 years, and our street has just been ignored. Last summer, they did fill some potholes. However, last summer, they paved on the other side of Division on 30th. They paved 31st, 32nd, 33rd, but not our side of 30th. So, for three years, I've been trying to get here, and I didn't know how to get here. So I'm here after going through the Comstock Council, and I just want to put it out there so you all know that we're not forgotten on 30th Avenue. We need a regrading project, is what I've been told. Drive down it, and you'll see, it's really bad. It's got noise pollution from FedEx trucks and UPS, and workers with their trailers. It's maintenance on our cars because of alignment and wheel balancing going. So I'm just here to put it on record to see when we could get 30th Avenue some help. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Paula. Look forward to following up. Next up, we'll have Robert Teal, David Beach, and then Sunshine Wigan.
Hi, I'm Robert Teal. I live on 14th, right off of Southeast, and, you know, I don't think you'll find someone in Spokane who doesn't love our river. And with this in mind, I do support our drought response measures, though I do think some adjustments need to be made. Currently, we use more water per capita than 98% of other US municipalities, and that's two and a half times what Phoenix, Arizona, is using, and four times LA. The issue with this is 75% of this water is being used on lawns. So there's no reason we can't have a healthy river and lawns, but we need to do things sensibly. So I do think that public awareness is key. Right now, I'm not sure that people even know we have restrictions in place, and unfortunately, there's no teeth behind the restrictions. And, you know, I was scanning next door, which, you know, granted is vahala for the chronically discontented, but many commenters do have legitimate complaints about the restrictions, and they tend to run, you know, you're telling me not to water, but I see golf courses watering during the middle of the day, and our own city parks water in the middle of the day. So if they're not following your rules, why should I? And I think we need a way to both address these issues and, you know, with reporting and, you know, take care of these concerns. So, and lastly, while I do love water-wise Spokane's efforts for rebating, for lowering consumption through rebings, their escape, I don't think they're enough. You know, I look out on any day, and my neighbors are watering midday, so I don't think saving $6 a month on their water bill through conservation is going to change their behavior. You know, lawns are very much part of people's American identity. So unfortunately, I do think the only solution is to hit people in their pockets. We already pay very little for water compared to other municipalities in the nation, so I think a good idea would be to create a reasonable baseline and then charge for consumption over this baseline. Kind of you pay more, or, excuse me, you use more, you pay more. So I think the future's now. We all want to be able to use the river in a couple of years and have a clean aquifer. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robert. Next up, we'll have David Beach, Sunshine Wigan, and we did have Dennis Flynn join us online. So, David Beach, you're up.
Okay, David, go ahead and hit star six to unmute. We can hear you.
Fantastic. I think we need to sever ties with all nonprofits, as the NGOs are allowed to do things that the government can't, and that's a travesty of justice and a waste of taxpayers' money. And I think that Zach Zepone should stop looking at his phone, because he often does during City Council meetings, as if to say that he doesn't give a flying fig about the constituents that he supposedly serves, and I live in his district. Go Zach, uh, no, wait, that's not it. Go Christopher Savage. Anyway, we also need to, I'm sure that you know that it's illegal to have rainbow crosswalks anymore, as they are a distraction. Aren't you happy that you wasted all that money on the rainbow crosswalks that are the... a distraction? What a travesty of justice that you waste all that money only to have it be banned after the fact. You allocated $50,000, and then you spent 10. Where's the other 40? Nobody seems to be figuring that one out. We need to have less watering of grass for the meth monsters, and we need to have zero funding to solve the indigent transient problem. That will make people leave. The more attractive it is for homeless people to stay here, the more they will keep coming. People like Rob McCann and Jules, whatever her name is, Helping Hands, I think, they're both horrible, and they're ruining the city, and you allow that with the wasted funding. End all that money, and they will leave.
Okay. Just want to remind everyone that state law does prohibit campaigning in public facilities. Thank you, Justin. Okay, next up, we'll hear from Sunshine, and then Dennis Flynn. Dennis Flynn?
Dennis, if you hit star six, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Dennis. Am I up, or is Sunshine up?
Go ahead, Dennis.
Okay, and you can hear me okay?
Yep.
Thank you, and thanks for circling back to me. Hi, Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. I emailed the council a Word document that quotes several parts of the comp plan that directs the land use in Spokane. It says lawmakers, managers, and decision-makers must act consistent with the comp plan and the plan's intent. However, development services and the engineers are approving plans that violate the direction made clear in the comp plan, arbitrarily exceeding zoning density while trapping residents with one-way-out. Look at Lacy and Ash as recent examples. And now they want to steal your authority, counsel, by asking you to defer your power to the bureaucracy. Through modifications, slot setbacks, slot sizes, and housing types, this council has certainly been making efforts to increase density in ways that are consistent with the intent of the comp plan. Do not subjugate you and your constituents to a non-elected bureaucracy already flouting our codes. Ash places a perfect example. Almost three times the 10 units per acre allowed requiring bicycles and pedestrians to share a 20-unit driveway with cars over a mile away from the Garland Neighborhood Center and the Shadle District Center and 3/4 of a mile from the Monroe Corridor. And all of this on a dead-end street traffic behind one-way-out. This is high-intensity housing and almost far away from centers and corridors as you can get, and it is unsafe. It definitely is not consistent with the comp plan, and is definitely not slightly increased intensity. One-way-in-and-out driveways that will trap residents during an emergency should not be approved. Plaid designs in violation of the 10 units per acre allowed in residential low should not be approved. Redefining alleys and driveways just to flout the comp plan should not be approved. At the very least, these definitions should include changes that provide the maximum allowed parcels to share one driveway, and alleys and driveways serving more than four parcels should be required to have at least two ingress and egress points. The council and the mayor should not subjugate yourselves and your constituents to the whims of the bureaucracy. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dennis. All right. Well, that concludes open forum. Can we get a motion to adjourn? All those in favor say aye. Aye, none opposed. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you all so much for joining us tonight.